Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen, coming to you live on WRPS from the H1R in Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got an update on the Water Department, a report on the Historical Commission, and an appointment to the Board of Assessors. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Ryan, would you do the honors? Allegiance, flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Now with that tonight, first item on open forum, we have a couple retirements. First up will be retirement of Police Detective Rick Summers. Good evening.
Hi Rick, how are you? Good to see you.
Just a quick background on Officer Rick Summers. Rick Summers started his law enforcement career in 1979 over in the town of Abington, for those of you that can remember that far back. Came to Rockland in the early eighties. He and I went to the police academy full-time in the early 1990s. And after the police academy, Rick was actually one of our crime prevention officers, a triad officer, and he was also one of our crisis negotiating officers. So, for the last 16 years, Rick was court prosecutor down in Hingham District Court. And we had a little retirement gathering for Rick about a month ago when he retired. And to his credit and to testament to who he really is, the entire Hingham Courthouse, including the Chief Justice of the Hingham Court, came to his retirement party, stayed the entire night, said nothing but wonderful things about him at his party. So, I would like to say we're going to miss Rick Summers, but I can tell you that we already do miss Rick Summers. He and I, like I said, went to the academy together. We've been friends for over 30 years now. He helped me through some rough times in the academy and some rough years on the job, and I think, you know, it worked both ways for the two of us. And the greatest testament that anybody had to say about Rick at his retirement party was that everyone that was there was considered one of his friends. And to be a police officer for well over 30 years and have that many friends is not an easy task. But Rick is an exceptional human being, and on behalf of the Rockland Police Department, I thank him for his service to the town of Rockland. And in fact, we do miss him tremendously, and we hope that he continues to hang around.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone.
So, this evening, I'm here on behalf of the entire board to congratulate really, oh, two gentlemen with Officer, oh, Richard Summers, I'll be in the first stand. Having grown up in the town, actually two streets over, from Officer Summers, you know, growing up in this town, like in knowing who the cops are, who the firefighters were, you know, who to watch out for when I got pulled over by Officer Buehl back in the day. And having the word really travel around town in actually just a few hours. You get to know who's who. They probably know who I was at an early age, and I know who they were throughout my life. And I have to say, Officer Summers, you have always been a gentleman. You have always made me proud to live in Rockland, to basically have you as my neighbor, and to really grow up in this town respecting, you know, like our law enforcement, respecting our police officers because of the fact that they had our types of people like you on the force. So, I just want to say, oh, personally, thank you and congratulations. And I'm on behalf of the board, I want to present to you the certificate of recognition, I'm in recognition of 31 years in the Rockland Police Department and as our court prosecutor out of Hingham District Court. Our community extends to you its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your tremendous dedication, tireless leadership, like in passion, representing the town of Rockland, Massachusetts, this July 14th, we were a little early, July 14th, 2017. It's signed by each member of the Board of Selectmen. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick, so much.
Show your retirement.
Enjoy.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, we have another retirement, firefighter Wayne Delprate.
Okay, I have to really thank Chief Llewellyn for coming up here and speaking because I was not planning on doing it, so Chief, thank you. So again...
It's like the old days, guys.
Yeah, I know, right? To my left. So, just a little bit of background on Wayne. Wayne, lifelong resident of Rockland. He was appointed as a Call Firefighter October 17th, 1977. He served as a permanent intermittent firefighter between '78 and '79, and then was appointed full-time firefighter January 9th, 1983. He retired just this past July. And again, like anybody that works for so long, you know, there's a void that's left, and I don't know if it will ever be filled. So, as a young officer, I was placed on Wayne's group. I look at it as Wayne's group, and he was kind of my anchor to slow me down and to learn from, and he did an awesome job, and I appreciate it. And I probably would not be here today if it wasn't for Wayne and what I learned over the course of the years. So, Wayne, thank you and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much, Chief. It was a pleasure.
One thing I have to say about both these gentlemen, and I actually mentioned it here a few months ago when my dad retired from the fire department as well, is both these gentlemen, Officer Summers and Wayne, like you were really part of a generation of firefighters, police officers, employees of the town, like who have always really lived and breathed the town. Oh, you know, you were a firefighter, like you've been a soccer coach, you were my soccer coach. Oh, like, and what I mean by that is your work and your commitment to the town of Rockland wasn't only during a 24-hour shift, it wasn't only during an overtime shift or anything else, it was all the time. And like, it's evident, as I mentioned, through youth soccer, through just really being involved in everything, being involved in the high school athletic boosters. And, you know, that, I think, really, when you look at the generation of town employees, you know, who, like my dad, were friends with you, Wayne, friends with you, Officer Summers, and everyone else, that's really, I think, emblematic of exactly who they were. And, you know, Wayne, it's been really much more personal than that. You know, like I grew up with Andrew, we were friends. Andrew pushed me out of my seat once in Nalami and Physiology class because I actually said Michelle was cute, but she is cute. But that being said, you've always been an awesome guy, and I thank you personally. And on behalf of the board, I want to present to you this certificate of recognition to you, Wayne Delprate, in recognition of 40 years in the Rockland Fire Department. Our community extends to you its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your tremendous dedication, tireless leadership, like compassion representing the town of Rockland, Massachusetts, this July 2017. And it's signed by each of the members of the Board of Selectmen. So, thank you, Wayne, for a job well done.
Okay, next up on open forum, we have a crosswalk dedication announcement for Ellen Partridge. Is Laurie Childs here?
Well, congratulations to Officer Summers and Wayne. Thank you for your service. It's awesome. So, on October 1st, we're planning to have a crosswalk dedication, and this project was a phenomenal community effort. Ellen, as you know, was a kind of a staple in Rockland. Everybody knew who she was. She worked for 18 years at Stop &amp; Shop in Abington, and unfortunately, was at the wrong place at the wrong time, and through a series of unfortunate events, got hit and killed by a car on North Ave. My husband and I really wanted to do something about it because this town was here for us when our house burnt down in 2007. So, to pay it forward, we organized fundraising, and we raised nearly $15,000 to put up the flashing beacon crosswalks that light up like Las Vegas, so you can't miss it, and you can see somebody crossing the street. And they really work, so I tried it out, like when they put it up, it was so exciting. Anyway, we wanted to commemorate the town's effort, and so we're seeking approval for October 1st to have that. You know, we kind of put the word out there, and then my husband and I realized it's a Patriots game that day at that time, so we're having a potluck at our house afterwards, and we're turning it into a big tailgate. So, weather permitting, we'll have the game on in our driveway, and it'll be a really fun time, so. And this is Kim and Jim Partridge, Ellen's brother and sister-in-law. Do you want to say any?
No, we just want to, you know, thank the town. An unfortunate incident happened, and the town's been very supportive, and, you know, not a lot we can say.
No.
We appreciate Laurie's efforts and her husband's as well. They have been unbelievably strong about this whole event, and we can't thank them enough. And we truly appreciate everything that you've done.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to say something. Ellen, I know, has a lot of friends in the town of Rockland, but one of the things we did in this town a long time ago was institute the bad bus that provided by. And while we do a lot of things, sometimes people don't take the time to tell us thank you for our efforts. They tell us what we do wrong. But Ellen made a point of stopping by the office one day and thanking myself on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for instituting that. It made it a lot easier for her to get back to work, back and forth to work. She was just that kind of person, and see her at the coffee shop and everything, and certainly a staple in the community. While I didn't know her as well as many of you, I always felt like there was a friendly face here whenever I walked in, so she was a wonderful woman.
Thank you. Nice job. Nice job. We'll be there.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should I tell them to bring the cake?
Next up on the agenda, we have item number two, minutes, open session minutes of September 5th, 2017. Vot to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? The vote? Under unfinished business, item number three...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I apologize, I'm having some audio difficulty, but who made the motion?
Mr. Ryan.
And who made the...
Ms. Hall.
Thank you. I assume it was you.
Unfinished business, item number three, Water Department update, Mr. Chaka.
I know the Board had asked that somebody be here from the Water Department. The schedule did not permit them to be here. I have had extensive discussions with the Chairman of the Rockland-Abington Water Works, as well as the Superintendent. They do hope that there'll be some announcement forthcoming where they'll be able to make some sort of announcement, and/or appearance they have invited before to attend any one of their meetings. As you know, we have applied for a grant with the town of Abington that would generate another 160, I believe, thousand gallons for the Rockland-Abington Water Works, and it would be up to the two towns to make a decision how much of that they want to allocate to Southfield. So, what are you looking for? You want me to...
There's no clip on that one, so you can just...
Just keep talking?
Yep.
That's hard for me to do. So, I hope that the temporary moratorium, as they're calling it, won't be there for long, but they, especially with Abington ending their sewer moratorium, felt as though they were getting inundated with requests and just needed a little bit of breathing space for a short time before they can go forward and say where we're going. They recognize the need for water for development in both towns, for housing in both towns, for development at Union Point, but they want to make sure that they do it right and don't overextend. I hope for a more detailed report for the Board at a future meeting.
Okay. Next up on the new business, item number four, Report of the Historical Commission, Jim Paul. Thank you, Jim.
Jim Paul from the Rockland Historical Commission, and with me is Pete Dow. One of the reasons we're here tonight is to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the troops that served in World War I that left Rockland, and it was 100 years ago on the 21st, which is Thursday. They all met down at what is now Dunkin' Donuts, which was a train depot, and they left for war. But let me just read this statement here, that there's a photo of that actual day in the kiosk that's at the rail trail at Dunkin' Donuts. A lot of the information that we've got and guarded for this is from Donald Kahn and John Galuzzo's book, Post Gods of Rockland, which is available at Town Clerk's Office. And there's a lot of photos in here. The town made a big deal of the troops returning from World War I. But let me just read the statement that we have down that's at the photo downtown. It's just, it's kind of condensed. So, "In July of 1917, President Woodrow Wilson called for troops in the form of a draft. The headquarters of the 37th District, which encompassed the towns of Rockland, Abington, Whitman, Hingham, Hull, and Holbrook, were at 251 Union Street, which is across the street in Rockland. The first 40% of the draft quota, whose 91 men, left for Camp Devens in Ayer, Massachusetts on September 21st, 1917. The second 40% left on October 5th, 1917. The departing troops were given gifts such as shaving mirrors and sweaters from the local industrial leaders such as E.T. Wright, the Emerson Shoe Companies, and the Shoe Companies supplied hundreds of thousands of pairs of shoes for the troops in World War I, as well as Civil War and World War II. There were 433 men from Rockland who served in World War I. Twelve died serving their country. There were 298 men from Abington, 17 died. And from Whitman, there were over 1,000 men serving, and 21 died. Not to be outdone by the men, there were 192 women who responded and helped in the war effort. The first-class of nurse training courses were organized by Dr. Gilman Osgood. The nurses served the troops both at home and abroad." There's a photograph, like I said, at the kiosk depicting the day that the troops left, the first 40%. We'd like to recognize and thank Paul Sneed and Shannon McDonald from Panopticon Imaging at 540 Union Street here in Rockland. They donated photo restoration services and copy services for our projects. And with us here, this is Pete's actual copy.
So, as you see, as Jim was mentioning, there's two events we want to celebrate here, actually, is the leaving of the troops, which occurred 100 years ago tomorrow, and then 98 years ago, on September 20th, 1990, 1919, the troops returned. And this, you may have seen around, there's quite a few copies, a lot of towns did this, where they did a panoramic view of all the returning veterans, men and women, everybody they could assemble. And the landscape of this goes from where we are now, which used to be the Spencer Estate, all the way around to Union Street. So, the right side is the Spencer Estate, all the way around to the front of Union Street. So, what we'd like to do two years from now, and start the ball rolling, and get everybody thinking about it, they have a commemoration very similar to this. We'll do another panoramic view of all Rockland veterans, very similar to what they did at the end of World War I. So, we're planning that now. We've got some ideas.
I've reached out to Vincent Fontaine, our new Veterans Agent. He's on board with it. He actually suggested maybe we can incorporate a breakfast. We haven't, this is just getting the ball rolling, it's kind of like the save the date type of thing, but we try to make it a Rockland Day, some entertainment, some things for the kids, possibly have it at the Vet Stadium, near the new memorial and on the field, and just try to turn it into a community day. If anyone has this book, there's probably a dozen photos of the parade that Rockland had, and they made a big deal. We've got some of the details. We actually have a program from the banquet, right down to what they had for food, the menus, and the whole deal. It was, they had just had a parade in 1912 for the centennial, bicentennial, no, that was the, yeah, that was the bicentennial. Yeah, so, all the storefronts still had their buntings and everything put away, they just put them back up in 1919. It was a big deal. It was, the community really came out and made the troops feel very welcome and very appreciated. So, we'd like to do the same for our vets. We've got, you know, we're losing vets a lot, there's not that many left from World War II. Sign to lose a lot from Vietnam, and a lot of vets that need help and they need recognition. We should recognize all the vets. So, I think this is a good community event, a good opportunity. Not a lot of us live to see commemorations of 100-year things, so I think it's great to celebrate them. And like I say, I think it's just going to be a great community event, so. This is kind of just a heads up, let you guys know and let the town know what we're doing here. One of the other initiatives that the Commission's doing is something that Pete has here.
Yep, so what we have here is, you probably see these around town on a lot of historic homes, these commemorative plaques, basically memorializing the date of the construction of the home. It's a typical one, this happened to be the one for the 1745 house that used to be down across the street. But what we ask is that we can look up your home address. We have a survey of historic homes that was done about 36 years ago. That details the history of the home, when it was built. If that survey doesn't have your home on it, just bring us a deed or some history, you know, historical documentation of when your house was built, and we'd be glad to make a plaque for you. It's a fundraiser for the Historic Commission, it's only $40, so obviously not making a lot. These plaques are made out of antique barn wood, so they're well-aged, they're going to last for a while, and the numbers are going to be done by Paul Carley, Carley signed, so. And these will be, we'll be registering these at the Holiday Stroll, getting orders, and you can always just contact us at Town Hall as well.
Excellent.
All right, one more thing that the Commission's evolved in is in conjunction with the GAR Hall, a lot of the members noticed that at the cemeteries, some of the older cemeteries like Maplewood, have a lot of Civil War veterans' graves that were becoming unkempt, that some were totally buried in bushes. So, we picked one last spring, and it happened to be Nathan Beal, and he was a member of the 43rd Mass Infantry in the Civil War, member of the Hot Stuff Post 74 GAR camp. So, we went down for the day, the members of the GAR, some of the members of the public, and had a cleanup ceremony, cut the bushes, raked it all, mulched it, planted flowers, and then the next day had a uniform detachment to recommemorate the grave. So, we're going to be choosing at least one per year that's in need of repair. So, if anyone has a relative that's a Civil War vet, please contact me, and if they're in a local cemetery, we can do something the same for them as well.
Short note on that, I just happened to be at a wake yesterday for a friend of ours in Quincy, and one of the former detectives of the Quincy Police Department, Mr. Schofield was saying how his relatives all came from Rockland and who they were, and that he went to the cemetery, and there was a Civil War marker on his relative's grave, that he didn't know that they had served in there, and they were not flabbergasted, but just amazed to see that somebody had taken the time to put them. And I said, "They do it on everybody's grave in Rockland. If you're a veteran, you have something on there if you're in Rockland," you know? And he was very happy to have come down and see that, you know?
Just to remind the citizens, the Holiday Stroll's coming up, the GAR Hall will be open again. On the second floor, there's numerous photos, and that's how we found Mr. Beal. There's a lot of photos up there, and there's a lot of, a real lot of recognizable names in town, and some families are still here.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's kind of what gave us the impetus to get going on this, and, you know, it's part of our history, I think we should keep it. The GAR Hall is looking great. They get a grant this year. It's totally redone outside. We're working on other grants to get it done inside. There's a lot of life back in the building. We'll be open again, like I said, for the stroll. We're partnering up, partnering up with some artist groups, so there's going to be some artists actually working and displaying in the hall. There's going to be live music. So, trying to get some life back in the old girl over there, so.
Doing a great job.
It's working out pretty good. That's it? Any questions?
Thank you. No, thanks very much.
Thank you.
That's excellent.
Next up, item number five, Comer Victulus, application for Gauz sushi. Mr. Chaka?
We have representatives of Gauz here. Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Jinyu Gao, and that's my cousin, Vincent Gao.
Can you move to the mic?
All right. And we were here for, because we were building a new restaurant over here, which on the 434 Union Street, right across the church, the church over there. And then we were doing a Japanese cuisine on there, which is shushis, like all the rolls, you know, all the Japanese stuff. So, both of us, we were doing shushi for 10, more than 10 years, and then we were happy to make a Japanese restaurant over there, and then, I hope, and all you guys are going to love it, you know? We were sure we were doing a good job on there, because we were being doing the shushi about more than 10 years on there, so, yeah.
Vot to approve?
Second.
Before I take a vote, I just want to make sure all the paperwork's in place, if we can make that motion subject to all paperwork.
We're ready.
Okay. All those in favor? Chairman, Ms. Phil? Thank you, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Passover six, Mr. Chairman.
Number six was the Capiata Medical Marijuana Proposal. Number six was the capiata medical marijuana proposal, and I believe that's been postponed to a future date. Item number seven, appointment for Board of Assessors, I believe that will be tabled. We're gonna have a joint meeting next week with the Board of Assessors, there's some other candidates who have come out. Okay, item number ten, Town Administrator's Report and Correspondence, Mr. Chaka.
Mr. Chairman, this is expanded a little bit, as you know, it's important correspondence, and we have had some correspondence since the agenda was posted, so I believe everything is in your books at this point in time, but I am pleased to announce that the Town of Rockland has been awarded the hundred thousand dollar D C R rail trail grant that we were hoping for. We applied in conjunction with Abington to clear the trees, prep the path, and then pave it from the senior center here in Rockland on Plain Street, all the way through to Monroe Street in North Abington. You'll be able to walk that whole distance, and it'll be paved like the section in the middle of the rail trail is paved right now. We anticipate that will be about fifty-eight hundred feet of additional paved walkway, bike, skates, walk the baby carriage, whatever. I do notice that we have substantially more use on the trail now that it's been paved. There are those people, of course, who don't want it paved, like anything, there's always two opinions, but as I walk it, I find that it's eight out of ten, nine out of ten, like it paved. It's been working out very well. We have met with Abington in anticipation of this grant, we are hoping to have this whole area done, cleared, and ready to go this fall, so we're very excited about that. And we've already met with representatives from Hanover in anticipation of applying for what would be our third grant, to do the section of trail from the police station all the way down to Route one thirty-nine, we hope, or further. We are also including in this, from Plain Street to Abington, to North Abington on Monroe Street, we're going to pave in this grant from Howard Street to Liberty Street, so you can leave the center of town and walk down a theme as pizza and get a pizza and then work the calories off on the way back. But we're very excited about that, and it was a joint, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant, it's a joint, a regional effort, which the state looks to, and that's why we believe that we'll be looked upon favorably even next year if we can get together with Hanover, so. That was announced at two o'clock today, so we're very excited about that. Also in your books is the announcement that we have been awarded a grant through Department of Energy Resources and through M A P C for our streetlights. That announcement is taking place in Lowell, I believe, on Monday, and that's going to help reduce the cost of Rockland buying the streetlights, while we had anticipated about a two-and-a-half-year payback, it might reduce that even further through the savings. I've met with them, it has not been easy, because there are a number of private paylights here in town, and so we had to differentiate those from the town lights. We're also looking at adding some of the lights in the darker areas up and down Union Street. Part of the thing that, part of the process is an actual survey, to try and soften the light in certain areas and brighten the lights in other areas, and I'm sure we'll have some adjustments. But the L E D lights last longer, are more efficient, are cheaper to run for the town, so we're very excited about putting that in place. Mr. Chairman, I know you've been waiting about eight years, how long have you been on the board, six years?
Eight, seven, seven and eight years now.
Yeah, so one of your first requests early on, so it's nice to see this come to fruition. Patience is a virtue.
No, they took that out of our contract.
Included in your package two thing, there's a picture of the brand-new Council on Aging van that finally has arrived and is in use last Thursday, registered, drivers trained, and everybody loves the ride, but there is also a request that the Board's selectmen declare their two thousand six white three fifty Ford as surplus with the V I N as is listed in your documents, but it requires a vote of the board to declare it surplus.
Do we have a motion?
So motion, second.
All those in favor? Chairman, Ms. Hall, thank you.
And a reminder, I've been sending out repeated reminders that anybody declaring surplus vehicles needs to do so now, so that we can do our annual October surplus vehicle auction. Also included in your package is the latest update from National Grid on our Rockland Saves Initiative. We want to encourage anyone who has not signed up for Rockland Saves to do so, it will be on the board out front all week, the phone number, they can call Town Hall to get the phone number, unfortunately, I did not include it in my information here. We've reached our goal on wireless thermostats, on replacing refrigerators and freezers, I think we need one more heating system. All of this is at a substantially reduced cost to the homeowners. We're a little over halfway to our goal on insulation upgrades and air sealing, especially this time of year, I think people looking at drafts should be thinking about the winter coming, is the place where we're lowest, but we have reached a total, or a combined score of about sixty percent of our goal towards Rockland Saves Initiative that we took, undertook last year. And again, that's not us, that's to the benefit of the homeowners, individual homeowners. We have a request from the Union Point, there is a Board of Directors, Kelly O'Brien McKinnon's term ends, expires on September twenty-second, I would like, Kelly is here tonight, but we would like to ask that she be reappointed to that position.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Not getting away that easy.
Kelly, we got that done before you could protest. We have been told also, we had a member of the Finance Committee on the Finance Board for the Union Point, for the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, however, he had moved out of town, so he was, he could no longer represent the town. The Finance Committee has recommended that Mark Pulserfer be appointed in that place to be on the Southfield Finance Board. Requires motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you very much. Lieutenant Governor's Visit, C P A Committee, I guess, let's go there, it's easy to do, we're still looking for people to volunteer, we do have a couple of applications in, and at the next meeting, we'll be announcing, to the best of our ability, who's been appointed from the various committees, and we're still looking for, we've got four appointments from this board, so we are still looking for volunteers to serve on the Community Preservation Act Committee. Not a whole lot of heavy lifting early, maybe just some education and a learning curve. Lieutenant Governor's Visit, Mr. Chairman, you and the Vice Chairman were both present, I thought it went very well. While she was here, we talked about all the successes we've been having here in Rockland with the Community Compact, the things that we have done on I T development, on housing, the committee, Mr. Ryan, that you headed up, there's been a couple of initiatives that we've done. We've also let her know that we're working not only in that area, but also on the, I think she was very impressed, quite honestly, Lieutenant Governor, that we took advantage of the A D A grant, we've done a hundred thousand dollars worth of work on a number of town meetings, and we applied for a second round of grants, or are in the process of, that we have completed our complete streets application, and that we're looking for work to be done there. The Roads Project, she took a very serious interest when we took the opportunity after last meeting to mention water levels at Reed's Pond. In fact, I had the opportunity to ride down to Reed's Pond with the Lieutenant Governor and point out the issues, and low and behold, I had a call this week from the Department of Transportation seeking to put together a meeting with D C R, the Town of Rockland, D C R Committee on Damp Safety, Department of Transportation, Rockland Representatives, that has not been scheduled yet, but Squeaky Will gets the oil, we made sure that she understood it was a priority for the Town of Rockland moving forward, so. I have to think that she had some influence in getting that meeting pushed up, so hopefully we can get something done about the boards at the dam. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Selectmen's Comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. What's that, Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take the time to thank the Youth Commission, the farmer's market wrapped up last Friday, I think it's something the town can really be proud of, came together really well, and we were able to, you know, incorporate the kids, and incorporate vendors, and incorporate some of our civic organizations, and I think it was a really great representation of what this town can do when it pulls, when it pulls together. So I want to thank the Youth Commission, I want to thank all the vendors, and I want to thank Michelle Finn, who really was the go-to person on this, on this project for the town, so I hope to see it going again next year, I enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Loughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, I had the privilege to stand in for Selectman Mullin at the Reimagine Rockland Meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and some of the landlords uptown. It was a great meeting, there was some great ideas and some inspired visions for what we're reimagining downtown Rockland to be. The turnout, Mike, was amazing, there was twenty-five to thirty people in the room, I mean, it was packed, and there's a lot of energy behind the project, yourself and Marcy have done a great job leading the charge with it, and there's more to come. I've reached out to several groups in town that want to have a say, that also have a vision in what the downtown of Rockland should be, and hopefully we have some more forums like we did the other night in the future. I think the biggest thing that came out of that meeting, we had one resident that, she had shown up, and she was a concerned resident, about the way the downtown looked, and the weeds on the sidewalk, and the trash uptown, and, and some of the, the stuff that's left behind by our animal friends, and, you know, she came into the room, and she was really upset about it, and she was trying to understand how we let these things go, and how, you know, whose job it was, whose responsibility it was, and, you know, by the end of the meeting, she had come up to me, and, you know, I had asked her, I told her, I said, you know, "It's all of our responsibility, we live in this town, you know, it's up to us as residents to, to grab the bull by the horns and go, you know, if you see an issue, ask the question, bring it to our attention, don't assume that just because we're on the board, that we're elected officials, that we know everything that's going on, don't assume that the Highway Department, the Park Department, they know that all these things exist." So the next day, she took that empowerment, and she went to the Highway Department, and later that afternoon, Dave Taylor and his guys were up there cleaning up the weeds on the sidewalk and picking up all the trash. So hopefully, you know, more participation from residents in that capacity, you know, it's all of our town, it's not just, you know, the responsibility of the board, bring it to our attention, we'll help you out, we'll guide you in the right direction, but, you know, it's, it takes a village, so let's keep going with that momentum.
So I was just gonna say, it's a great opportunity for community service for the kids.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, and I think that was a bring-up too, we talked about getting the high school kids involved.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
I just want to say a couple of words about Rick Summers and Wayne Del Prette. Know those two guys a long time, you know, and, you know, who wants to see a firefighter, who wants to really see a cop, they're like dentists, you know, they're nice guys, but nobody really wants to talk to them until you need them, but I'm gonna tell you, these two guys have so much exceptions to those rules, you know, if you ever needed them, they were there when Mary and I needed them to guide us through some of the difficult times in your life that you never expect you're gonna have, and when you have somebody that, a friend that you know that can take you through those steps that you need to go through, and make it less painful if you have to do it. And Wayne, you can't say enough about Wayne Del Prette and the rest of his family for what they've done for the Town of Rockland, and how they've represented themselves here in the town. I want to thank both of them for a great job. The grant stuff, I mean, we have every week now, we got another grant here, we got a grant there, you know, here a grant, there a grant, they're not easy to get, but you know something, the people that we have in command, Allen and Marcy, and actually all the people within the offices are working so hard together to put Rockland on that map, and you know something, we're here, and everybody knows who we are now, the Governor knows, the Lieutenant Governor knows, everybody within our whole system, including every department, the elected officials are not, have had a hand in Rockland's resurgence, if you will, and I'm so glad to see it, we have three new members of the Board of Selectmen here, and I sit here, listen to them talking about all the things they're doing, and all I can say is, thank you to all of you for stepping up and being involved, you know, there's no axes to grind, just Rockland's medallion to shine and show the world that we're here to do things for not just the town, but the area surrounding us. It's just, you know, it gives me heart, and I've been around a long time, I hate to use the Jerry Del Prette thing, you know, I started out as a little kid a long time ago, but it's really nice to see the Rockland turnaround, and go from a struggling financial city, a town, if you will, to a town that's far better off in so many different areas, and it's, I'm just happy to say it, the people of the Town of Rockland should be happy with their elected officials, and we still want to see more young adults like these guys here sitting around us anymore, you know, I'm an old guy, I can't hang around forever, and it's nice to, no, it's nice to know that there are people that are stepping forward now that are concerned about the town and not just concerned about one thing, if you will, you know what I mean, there's not, this isn't just a pointed thing, this is a whole town endeavor, and I'm really glad to see it, and thank all of yous, quite frankly, and I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, I mean, I mean, it was evidenced tonight that, you know, Rockland's big enough to take care of us, but also by the employees, small enough to care, and that was, that was something that was touched upon in your tribute to them when you gave out the plaques, I mean, I can remember standing on soccer fields, God, twenty-plus years ago, with Wayne, having conversations, and, what people don't realize, that we have a lot of employees in town who actually live in town, as well as go out and do extra things, you take somebody like Mr. Paul, who's in the back of the room, Historical Society, he works as, huh? My mic is off? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, 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 go, I don't wanna, yeah, yeah, you are.
All right.
I don't want to kill the momentum.
I apologize, but at any rate, I'll finish up on this and I'll go back. Sorry about that, Mike.
You're doing great.
Now, watch, I heard you talk so much earlier tonight.
Two shots.
But at any rate, it's one of those things, a lot of people don't really take that into consideration, until something happens to them, and they realize that, you know, some of the teachers in town live in town, you know, they're our neighbors, they're our brothers, they're our sisters, they're our daughters, they're nieces, they're nephews, that's what makes the Town of Rockland really great, and it's a great place to be, which I'll lead on to the next point later, but until then, Mr. Mullin, and I apologize, you should have just gave me a shove.
I know. I'm picking up on that, I actually thought having our, our retired employees up here was just an awesome idea, and I hope actually, this actually might be able to begin a tradition, if you will, that, you know, like, whenever is appropriate, you know, like, we do have our employees who have been with us for years, and come up and, and, you know, be recognized for the work that they do. I think that was just like a really special thing tonight for Mr. Del Prette and Officer Summers, so, thank you, and congratulations to them. The reimagine Rockland thing, as Mr. Loughlin mentioned, actually it's not a thing, it's an initiative, but it is, like, as everyone has mentioned, it is a really exciting thing, where, really, I believe at a point now, where we're harnessing the work that Mr. Ryan did in terms of bringing everyone together to address and identify the housing needs, we're really capitalizing, I think, on the progress that we've made in, in brought people, raised awareness of our work around the forty-hour initiative, and all of the zoning needs and flexibility that we need to have a vibrant downtown, and I think over the summer, a lot of work has gone into the reimagine Rockland Initiative, and I think in the next few months, we, as I mentioned before, we were lucky enough, the town was lucky enough, in the spring, to receive a, a grant from the state, another grant from the state, and, and to really begin to chart our course in terms of our short-term goals, and also like our long-term... also like our long-term goals. And I think over the next few months, we're going to be in a place where we're going to be able to come back to this board, into the town, and identify those in a really, hopefully, practical way and determine action steps and bring people back into the fold to really work to actually continue accomplishing those goals. And like, it's going to take all of us. And it's been, last week, as you mentioned, Mr. Loughlin, there were more than 30 people at the event. The Otis, the meeting we had with the Otis and that we're continuing to have with the Otis, will bring more than a dozen Otis at least, like every single meeting. And other meetings have attracted just as much, if not more, interest. So like, it's amazing to see the excitement. And now our goal is to really harness it all and to really move forward in a way that works for all of us. So that's really exciting. Expect more. We're now, as I mentioned, going back and taking what we've heard over the past three months and working to incorporate all that into our plan. So there'll be more to come on that. And before I turn it back over to Mr. Kimball, I just want to say also, one of the, there were many gems about Rockland. There was an article in the Ledger over the weekend that highlighted that Rockland, highlighted the fact that Rockland is one of the only communities on the South Shore to have our free-folded kindergarten. And I think that's a huge, like, it's just a huge thing for Rockland to be proud of. Thanks to the work of this board, like previous boards, the School Department, the School Committee. But I also, I'm being a proud young dad of two, six months old also. One of the other things that I've always heard about and have heard about the value, but now I'm really beginning to realize it, is the value of the Rockland daycare up at the community center. And I realized it over the past four weeks now. And I just want to say, it is, like, I'm out and about, talking to people on a regular basis. Hopefully, they listen. But, and like, people are always baffled when I talk about the fact that Rockland does have a full, does have a public daycare, that it is affordable, and that it really is a value added here in the community. And I think, like, for all those things, for working families, like all of ours are trying to do right by their kids, for their jobs, for their families, and everything else, I really do think there are just so many things. We often hop on the negative or we turn on Facebook and we see the negative and really just take a minute, I can take a pause and realize what we have here in Rockland. And it's just really, you know, we're always going to have work to do, but there's a lot of amazing things and a lot of amazing people we have here. So I'll end on that.
Well, where I was leading up to was, if anyone's, and I apologize for jumping through. I was just so excited about it, you know? Can you tell? But if anyone's read The Globe lately, the Union Point facility over there was one of the potential lists in the state of Massachusetts that Amazon might be looking at for a future site. And that's why I was talking about all the things that Rockland has to offer, because Rockland's a great community and it's something that puts us out on the map. And as I've said many times before, when I joined this board, we wanted to be able to be the ones to lead this allshore. And I think we're all doing a great job doing that by our participation. In the audience tonight, we have two of our reps for Southfield Redevelopment Authority. We just reappointed Kelly O'Brien McKinnon and also Steve Lamont is here from the resident side over there. And what I want to talk a little bit about was, although there isn't a lot of time, Amazon's a great potential for our town as well as the surrounding communities who share the base, whether that be Abington or Waymouth, as well as the entire South Shore. I mean, it's not often that you get a corporation that's looking to build a headquarters somewhere and to be considered or be put in the run, at least from the state level, to be offered up as something that is very significant. There's a lot of things happening in Rockland that other places don't have. I mean, we have public transportation with the commuter rail. We have great schools that are public schools in town and around here. And we've, a lot of the kids who have graduated the high school have gone on to major colleges and been very successful. Those are the attributes that corporations look for when they're looking to hire locally. Would it be in a headquarters? It's not a typical type of, okay, this is going to be a warehouse or fulfillment center. This is actually going to be, the headquarters where executive decisions are made is that type of operation. So there'll be higher-paying jobs, there'll be skilled jobs across the board. And I think that says a lot about just being, let's say, introduced into the conversation with Amazon. And we, as a community, although we don't have a lot of time, the RFI is due, I believe, a month from today, which means it has to be submitted by then. We really need to work quickly if we want to try to do something to induce or have a conversation with Amazon to possibly consider Rockland with our piece over there at Union Point, as well as with Waymouth and as well as with our neighbors in Abington. So we really need to do something quickly and jump on board to at least try to pursue that. I mean, the base has been sitting there and the Smart City aspect and all that. That's what the base was designed for over there right now. When we rezoned it a couple of years ago, we rezoned it so we could have corporations come in and have jobs and things like that. And what people don't realize is that, once that happens, the rest of the community, the surrounding community, there's a radius that mushrooms out, that everything seems to grow and do, things become more prosperous for people. We have people who are looking to sell homes. That brings, helps bring the house values up. We have people who are looking for jobs. That gives them good jobs to look for. We have people in the community who can service them in other means if they're not working at Amazon, whether that be the local restaurants, that be the tailors, the barber shops, things like that. There's a multitude of services out there that could be, that would help, let's say, bring the town up to another level and a new chapter. So it's something I think we should pursue as a board and it's something that, I mean, we need to appeal to our politicians, okay, our senators and our reps. We also need to appeal to our congressmen and our senators. And we also need to, I think we really need to appeal to our, the state's not only Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Plito, but we really need to appeal to Jay Ash's office as well, because he's economic development. And they're the ones who are actually going to end up taking the sites, or multiple sites from Massachusetts and trying to present a proposal. And there's things we could do with Amazon if Amazon was to come. There's a lot of things we could do. We could do things in lieu of taxes. We could do charitable things. We could partner with the schools. We could do all sorts of things. I know that in the RFI, they're looking for what the town can do for them, but I look at what they can do for us. So we have to look at both sides of it. How will it impact the town? What can we do? How can we be better served if somebody like Amazon was to come to town, or a portion of our town? They're saying 50,000 jobs. That's a lot of jobs. Now, obviously, that wouldn't happen right away. Based on what they're talking, they're talking 8 million square feet of office space, 50,000 employees is roughly 160,000 square feet per employee with the initial building, according to the RFI, being 500,000 square feet, which would equate to about 3,125 employees initially. So it sounds like a lot all at once, but it's something that we would grow into. So it's something that maybe we, if we were to offer something, possibly offer something in milestones tied to job creation, tied to real estate, and tied to maybe what they can do in kind or what they can do to partner with the community. Because as Amazon has grown, it's a new world out there, you know? Their charitable side is starting to take hold and they want to make themselves, you know, the leader of the world as well. They're across, they're across the world. They're already in Massachusetts. They have seven different locations. They've got currently about 3,000 employees branched out between those locations. What's interesting is that their Seattle headquarters right now, if you do a little bit of research on it, approximately, I'd say, 50% to 60% of their current workforce lives within a 25-mile radius of headquarters. So I mean, all the surrounding towns and community on the South Shore would be involved in this as far as the growth, or we'll say, an engine that would grow the South Shore. And again, that's something the chamber should look at as well. And then they have other facets of the company where the employees actually either walk to work or bike to work because they live such, in such close proximity to headquarters. So there's a lot of things. And those people, when they bike and they walk, they need restaurants. They need, they need to have their bikes fixed. There's all sorts of things that happen with this. So I know that people on the street, if you talk to them, some are like, well, what is that? And the first thing that comes to their mind is 50,000 people. We're only a town of, say, 18,000, we'll say, round numbers of 20. Waymouth has, excuse me, approximately 60,000 residents. Abington is slightly less than us. So even if you said between three communities, we have 100,000 residents, we could potentially have 50,000 jobs to split up not only between those three towns, but between the entire South Shore. So something to really think about. Sure.
And so we only have a month to respond to the RFI. Like, is there any way we could coordinate with Southfield to, I mean, because a lot, a lot of that will also be marketing of the whole entire thing. Is there any way we can do like a joint venture to do that and to accomplish?
I think what we need, I think what we need to do, we need to do two things. We need to make a determination of what we would consider, what we would like, what we, how we would approach going through what we could offer Amazon as our community and what our expectations will be at the same time. Secondly, we would have to do this in partnership with the SRA, the town of Abington, the town of Waymouth, as well as the master developer, which is Elstar. Because they're going to make, they actually, I've spoke with some of the principals over there and they're actually going to make a run at trying to convince Amazon that they're the place to be, which means Rockland's one of the places to be, as well as Waymouth and Abington. And this is something a lot of us have been waiting a long time for. The base, you know, went away, it died a little, then it's been resurged, it's been backed, they've had turnover. And this could potentially, if we could land Amazon, that would be something that would, I think, benefit the entire South Shore as well as the state. And not only that, and even if we didn't land Amazon, at least we're going to get looked at by other tiers of corporations coming down the pike. So I think, I think we're prime and it's really ripe right now that Union Point's on the verge of taking off. There's a lot of good things happening over there. There's activity. Unfortunately, there was a recent fire over there of a building that was under construction. But I rode through there the other day and that building's already being torn down and they're looking forward to rebuilding already. So I think that what we need to do is we need, I know that we've reached out already to try to set up a meeting with representatives from Elstar, representatives with the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and we're going to try to coordinate that with the mayor's office in Waymouth as well as Abington. Because we don't have a lot of time, but all three communities have a big say in what happens over there. So we really need to be on the same page. But, and the only reason I brought it up and it wasn't, because this had just developed because prior to setting the agenda, we, I didn't have an opportunity to speak to any of the principals to see if it was serious. I had read the article in The Globe that named them one of eight sites in the state. But you don't know if someone's really going to go after it. I mean, because ultimately, it's their decision as much as it is our decision to help bring them here. Because we need, we need to, we need to do something to get recognition, to get people here and they want to be here. And I think we're on the right track, but we have to put our minds together and coordinate an effort to tell Amazon why we're their best choice. So that's something to think about. The other thing I did this past week, we had a car...
What about tax incentive? When Dario Serrano came here, we gave them a tax deferment that really helped bring them there. And they're still here years later. And I think that, you know, in that type of situation with a company that big, you know, money talks and everything else walks, as they say. So that if you offer them an incentive, you know, that's better than any other area is going to, you know, give them, we're going to drag them here. Because, you know, it's like GE came to Boston and, you know, they gave them big tax breaks and everything else because they're so huge and the benefit that comes with it is immense to everybody concerned. So I think that's...
Well, I think it's something that could possibly put on the table. And it might be something that's tied to milestones, whether that's jobs, what they provide to the community back, and also what they do, you know, for actually building here, having changeable real estate as well. And we could do that. So we could, we could devise something that, as they grow, the incentives increase so that they would want to be here, as opposed to having them have a big incentive and use that for leverage against another community. My tactic would be to give them a smaller incentive and increase the incentive as they actually grow and expand and do good here. At least that's my viewpoint. And again, it's up to the board.
Yeah, 6'1" half doesn't matter.
But it's something, it's something to think about and just put out there so that we can talk about our next meeting, which will be October 3rd. But we'd really have to have a game plan pretty well set up and moving and in place. At this point, I think, you know, if anyone's available, I don't know, I'm usually feeling free to make myself available, but I don't know if any of the members of the board are free because it's going to take everybody's effort to go through and try to make this happen. And I know that the SRA had gone through and I think they were posted to meet every night just so that they could coordinate people to go through. I know I'm saying we have to do that, but maybe next week, we could go through and post for a couple of days so that we could discuss that. Kelly?
We have posted for every night because we never know what's going to come up. Tom is one of the, there's two people, Tom Henderson, my partner, is one of the contact people for the particular committee that's going to put together. So I can't stress enough that it's four weeks for the proposal. An interesting article for you to read, too, is the September 8th New York Times, where basically, we meet every piece of major criteria and there was only one other community in Denver that they believed did so. So we really do meet all that they're looking for. So maybe if you could filter everything through Tom so that we can make it uniform for the town? And if you need us to come up to the meeting in October for your next meeting, too, maybe we can have a bullet list by then of what we think the proposed incentives are so that we can put it into the proposal with Elstar.
Tom's already been in touch, trying to coordinate a meeting.
Okay, good. Because I think it's something that we, we as a community have to make a determination what the pros and cons are, how Amazon would benefit us and how we would benefit them. Doing a little bit of research, it seems that some of their, they have employees, but they have turnover with employees after a certain amount of time because they're headquartered in cities. And what happens is, it seems that they hire a lot of people who are out of college, they grow, and then when they either get married or decide to raise a family, they seem to veer off from the city life. And that's something we already have here. We could give them somewhat of a city life on their campus over there, but we could give them the hometown feeling off-campus where it's nice to raise a family, it's safe, we have good schools, we have good police, we have good fire, we have all those services everyone has really grown accustomed to, that people take for granted, that other parts of the country don't have that. You have call firefighters. You don't have a full-time firefighters. I mean, they know that we have colleges, they know we're close to the ocean, they know we're close to the city, we're close to Logan, they know all of those things. But we also have the affordable aspect of housing, whether that is something that grows downtown in Rockland. But Metro South is much less expensive than Metro West or Metro North of Boston because of the land that's been available. The South Shore's been the last one. But this is something that may grow with the state as well, because then the state can do improvements. And you may even see the red line being extended down back. That's something that could happen as well. I mean, in the short term, maybe they could go through and extend or add another commuter rail car or a line or a different time and they could have a cutoff. Because extending the red line is going to take widening the track and land taking and things like that. But we have highway access. Route 18 is already under construction. The water has been solved, that it's going to be MWRA. This may speed that up now if we're, if we're shortlisted by Amazon. And the fact that we have educational facilities around here that could feed them, employees. And then Mr. Ryan mentioned, if we do come up and devise some sort of TIF arrangement with the other three communities, so everyone's kind of in line with one another, is something that we could grow into Amazon. So it's not like... So, it's not like it's gonna happen overnight, but if we were successful attracting Amazon, I think we're gonna have other corporate companies come in as well. You don't get them all, but at least if we get a shot in or something, it's an exercise, we can do it.
And it shows people by going through, and I don't wanna say exercise, but we're putting ourselves out there, we're letting other firms and companies know that we take these things seriously and, you know, God forbid it's not Amazon, it could be like the next best thing, which, who knows what that is yet, but I think, and perfect, I think, and I mean, and even if we post, oh, you know, like every Tuesday evening if we have to, you know, until this whole thing wraps up, that's, that's fine with me, too. So, I'll do whatever.
We could do it during the day with daycare in, if you want.
No, I like Tuesdays.
I'm accessible during the day, most days.
I mean, it's one of those things, it's an opportunity that just presented itself. So, the reason I mentioned it was because it's gonna take all of us to weigh in on it. And if, at the department head meetings, Alan, if there's anything that any of the departments can think of, if there's any residents who wanna contact us with any ideas about, you know, why Rockland should be the first choice for Amazon or other entities at that point. And again, I think it's, it's actually nice to be recognized that this might, might be, you know, it has the potential to possibly, you know, bring in or land, you know, something like that, which is really unheard of in the past. But just goes to show, you know, how far we've turned. And by changing the legislation and by tweaking things over there and having things happen, that it's become more business-friendly. The other thing that people don't talk about is the fact that it's 65 days from submitting an application to having your site review and everything done over there. That's unheard of. I mean, if they were talking about trying to go to someplace else in the state, it may take four to five times that. And that 65-day window makes things happen. And the fact that it's already been laid out over there, it's very easy to take pieces and modules and move them around, because nothing's been started yet. So, we're probably in better shape than other communities, I would think. And the fact that it's affordable and there's lots to do, and we're close enough, we're close enough to the city to enjoy the cultural aspects, but we're far enough away to actually have hometown America. And I think those are two things that are gonna potentially bring the people of Amazon here. Because ultimately, it's the employees. The employees are gonna wanna be somewhere. I mean, if you look at Amazon's website now, they have 6,600-plus job openings in Seattle. So, the first thing you ask yourself is why? And then you look at what does Seattle offer versus what Boston off is. When we say Boston, we'll say Union Point at this point.
We will keep the board informed.
So.
We do have executive session, Mr. John.
We do. And I have one last thing. I want to mention that we did have a phone-in with MSBA with the school last week, and we've made a determination about student count. We're working on trying to increase that as we move forward through the process for the elementary school. So, we have been working on that as well. And again, we do have an exec session, so I am done. And I apologize. Would you like to take over now?
I'll take over, sure. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of our negotiations and collective bargaining and not to reconvene.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.